Recording.
I'm scared to skip while we get.
Help me start this line.
It's okay. Oh my house. Um we'll start this uh like open on the Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Swan Planning Commission. Um here at six thirty nine. Uh we do have one commissioner is gonna be a few minutes late, should be walking in any momentarily. Uh first item of business is the agenda review. Anybody have any input? Anything to say? We don't have anybody in the crowd to give a public comment today. Um I guess we'll move to review the meeting minutes of July thirtieth, twenty twenty four. In fifteen a moment. Motion's been made. Uh is there a second?
Almost.
Can you second him if he wasn't here?
Yeah, can you second make you can make motion even as long as he's ready. Um. Motion's been made in the second. Is there any discussion? There none. All those in favor? Five say aye.
Aye.
opposed? No, it's not. Thanks. I am. Uh land use development regulation review with Mr. Parent.
You want to share the screen? I'm gonna pick off. How where we got the last. Uh evening, we're still kinda going through districts. We know we're gonna relook at setbacks. We made adjustments. Um just as a quick update to the crowd of there. Um I haven't touched the documents since then, just cuz it's only been.
Two weeks.
A week.
A week. Who's the last week we were here?
That was last Sunday. Now we're here next Wednesday too, so. Uh just uh.
This is getting old.
Yeah, so we're uh.
Sorry.
Went through, we we talked about settings. One, I did wanna make sure that we have clarity, cuz I think it's gonna. Be the big issue is in the water sewer district. We looked at um. You know, in the water district, which would be your arc five, I believe now. It's. Minimum lot size fifty and fifty, minimum lot. You mentioned minimum lot size will be eighty seven hundred and twelve square feet. I think or eighty seven hundred square feet instead of the. One fifth of an acre, just. You know, people can figure out their dimensions probably easier than one one fifth of an acre is. Um. This is taken from the city of San Alomos. Technically, it'd be eighty seven and twelve is required by the state, but I think eighty seven is cleaner.
So you are putting, so minimum lot sizes, you are gonna put the acreage and the square feet.
So I'm gonna give I so your options, I yeah, I was gonna do the one fifth of an acre, eighty seven hundred square feet, just so that people know one fifth of an acre is gonna be eighty seven twelve.
Perfect. I mean, I think it's easier if every. Zone is is done like that because then people.
Okay.
Don't just do math, more math than they have to.
Right, cuz like figure out how many square feet are in a fifth of an acre.
I mean, not only figuring that out, but some people would like to.
If it's square feet. When they walk in the door and they've already done much math and you're like, something doesn't add up.
Yeah, okay. So um we were gonna look at the average. We haven't. This is something we're gonna do for a concept edit thirty five. For it's your current setback. There's a good chance that the majority of your homes in this district don't need that. So what we thought we would do going forward, this is from Enesburg, and we'll take your exact language. For the final draft of this, it'll be the average of um. The road, basically the average setback of the area with the Enesburg's language, ultimately meaning if. The average home is fifteen feet setback, that's your setback. You have to follow line with what's currently there. So you look like the neighborhood as it currently sits. We did, I am suggesting a a ma- uh. An increase as we got rid of building lots and all of them. Sorry, I didn't highlight this one. I showed we are one maximum lot coverage because the building coverage becomes confusing when it includes.
Instead of building, it's a driveway and.
Because exactly, it's just buildings.
Yeah, I. Right.
When you say building.
You know, so I think lot coverage is better. We bumped it to fifty percent here. Um. I.
Your definition for that in the back of the book?
We will put a definition for lot for lot coverage.
Yeah.
And lot coverage is used in every other town. You were the only ones that I saw that I've been reviewing it. Some towns will do in certain areas.
Building.
Milton will do, for example, in certain commercial area. Maximum building coverage of thirty five percent, maximum total lot coverage of this because they don't want buildings built so big.
There's not enough parking. There's not enough parking.
There's not enough parking, so they like do that. On this small of a lot. I mean, you're talking someone, if they build on the exact smallest lot you have, they've got forty three hundred and fifty square feet of impervious. That sounds like a lot.
It's not.
But when it comes to a driveway and the sidewalk and the deck you have, like everything that is on your property becomes part of the impervious. So like. Do you get, yeah, do you have a?
Even a shed, even a even a.
Yeah. How do you?
So a um accessory dwelling or non accessory dwelling is.
Yeah. So like take a drive, say your driveway is twenty feet wide, which would fit two cars and it's fifty feet deep. That's a thousand.
Would be included.
Square feet of impervious, so.
Right, we had that issue with the um gun retail.
Right, and.
That they had so much driveway.
And where this is really getting at too is if we want more housing, denser housing, if people are gonna put in a duplex or a three unit, they have. So middle, so the way I always looked at it. And 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 Ross probably similarly like. I think most people building houses or apartments would actually put in more parking if they were allowed. It's the lock coverage, so that they need, so if they want four units to rent, it's better to house people. State's only gonna require them, especially in this area, to have four parking spots. We don't give them enough lock coverage, and maybe you guys wanna consider. The state minimum is one parking spot, one and a half. If you went to two, we give you sixty five percent lock coverage or something like that as a bonus.
That's the point.
Because we wanna incentivize them to build enough parking. Where other towns might say, we don't want the apartments, so we're gonna leave it at fifty percent. So there are there are ways to think about incentivizing behavior. You want the state puts in minimums, like these are really small lots. We wanna make sure people have enough parking, so no parking on your streets. Do you wanna incentivize lock coverage and say? It's fifty percent, but if you build a multifamily and it's three or four units and you do two spots per unit within our parking regulation, we will. Give you an additional lock coverage bonus.
Federal percent of the right worst.
Kind of that look, where is that located? Where would it be?
Like a bonus? I can tell you another town that does. So St. Albans.
Like in our.
So um St. Albans town. Um does a lot of bonuses, especially in. Um.
Like what chapter would that be in?
It'd be right on that. Great, great on that page.
Page.
So it'd be um.
Be like special allotments for apartment. If you have a little.
Well, whatever you, so it's meant to this. Those kind of things are meant to incentivize any behavior you want.
Allow them, allow them like, we want you to put in more parking, so people aren't parking on the street right here.
Yeah. Well, right, cuz but the average person is gonna say, I can tell you, so I got four thousand square feet, right? Building. Two, four eight hundred square foot apartments, my building envelope sixteen hundred square feet, if I do two eight hundred, two eight hundred, so I'm sixteen hundred square feet. Parking spots about a hundred and sixty five, sixty three square feet roughly. So four of those is. Six hundred square feet plus your drive in and all that. It's like all of a sudden you're out of your impervious surface space. And so you only are gonna give them one parking spot each because.
They take and go from eight spots down to four spots for for you.
But if we're gonna say if you're willing to add those eight.
We'll let you add more.
Right, sure.
We'll let you have more surface.
And that is that is that something I'm going to?
You would do.
Okay.
Be able to understand what they're.
Well, if they only have four spaces for four units, they don't have enough anyway.
Yes, but they're within quarter mile of public apartment they do.
We don't have it. True, she's right. We uh.
So you still might wanna say, cuz then you're they're allowing six apartments, but they're they're gonna.
I mean, people are. So what's it on? What's it at?
I meant um front of first.
Yeah, I'm on the. So this is town, this is.
Oh yeah, that's public parking for the stores. It's not public parking for residential.
How is it fine public parking? What's that? I think.
The antics.
I'm gonna guess within the next three years, the state will tell you public parking is on street parking. They don't want you to say, so the city of San Alomos, they just put a definition there that's saying. Street parking doesn't count as public parking, so they apply that to the state.
With a.
Cuz now the state is like, well, we don't care if you have one, just make one way roads, park on those that way. We don't want, we don't want people not living in homes. And if they're doing not putting people in homes or building out homes, cuz there's not enough place to put cars. How about.
Where do you put that way streets? What street are you referring?
But then where do you put those cars when you can't park because of the snow?
We, what people used to do it or they do in their city. They get up in traffic three in the morning.
Right, cities, yeah.
Cities do it all the time.
Yeah, hard ground, yeah. I lived in the city. It's like make sure you're parked on the city.
Um looking, sorry, it's gonna be probably in their growth center. So. I'm just saying, those are the things. So even if they aren't allowed one and a four unit at the state law, they only have to put in six parking spots.
Right.
But if you wanted to have eight, say they're building.
It's not really a task.
Yeah, that's all of that.
So we, yeah, we need to get on this because.
But I understand that concept. I just wanna know where.
Yeah, I understand that.
So we can be right on that same page.
We need a cheat sheet.
I'm just looking, they they usually have it.
Yeah.
I like how they they just added that. That's nice how they. Maxim lock coverage literally instead of having definition in the back, building plus parking.
Yeah, that's simple. Simple. Fifty percent, where is that definition dodge on your own?
Uh. Industrial uh. They used to have, they might have. So it was a density bonus. So they have maximum lock coverage in San Alomos Bay. I mean, towns towns gone aggressive after housing. They realized that that's where the money is for them. Uh uh so they've got. P U D, I'm just gonna have this.
I like that. We need to add density bonus.
Okay, so.
So like here, so the D R V may grant a five percent, so the D R, the state's D R V or whatever. Criteria of the products impaled development or reuse of existing structures. So that density bonus isn't lock covered bonus, but that might be like. You know. More units or more.
If you go back, what's that thirty percent one for? Up a little more. P U Ds are the. Elderly housing, housing for people that did, huh?
Or so like if you have an acre and you're allowed. Five houses, you'd be allowed or ten houses, you'd be allowed thirteen if you're building elderly housing. Um.
Copy paste that whole section.
If you want me to, I can.
No, Joe, like I need, i- it's gonna.
A lot of towns are going more to density, but that's how you incentivize. So. You want one acre field developed, you want to be senior housing ed, you need to tell developer.
Give them.
You can put in four more houses if it's seen.
While Milton does the same thing, like.
They're gonna have a park. Just.
Right, um I'm just looking to get to Heather's point. They've updated this, they've just updated, so. Let me keep looking.
I just want it to be.
Why does that say bonus? So we do see if there's a lock coverage. Yeah, so when I originally, when we used to have this, we had a thing as around stormwater. And maybe what they did is they just, probably what they did is they probably just gave it a lock coverage. And um. Their lock coverages have gotten a little more aggressive from the last time I looked at this. Um but effectively, what we would say would be in the table, just like.
Milton probably has it in there.
Yeah.
I know they did the density bonuses as well.
District, but I like, to your point, I like a rate on the same district where it's like, if you do this behavior, whatever behavior is, this is the reward, cuz we're trying to incentivize this behavior. Um.
Yeah, so that that was, I like that. I that's something here.
You know, so I'm just looking, see if. Again, just quick. But yeah, they sound's gotten pretty aggressive here, cuz look, this is their rural district. They have eighty five percent lock coverage.
What's the minimum lot size? Eighty seven hundred and eight?
Hundred, if you got offsite community or public water sewer and then let the shy of an acre, they're doing forty thousand square feet. They've done that for a while. They don't require quite a full acre. So I mean, this is the town that you're driving down and half of your big bros, you burped with this town, so this is how they're looking at development, but. They are, we're being aggressive, going fifty percent from where you've been. I can tell you San Alomos town, their perspective of this and I'll and I've known it. They want housing. They have a local auction tax. Everybody who moves in is probably worth about two thousand dollars a year between buying on Amazon and whatnot, and that local auction tax or a thousand bucks a year, like we need that. That people drive this, you know, I feel like a visit, you want restaurants, you need people like, so they're really incentivizing how and you have the tax revenue. This.
If nothing else, you're you're gonna clean up some brick yards.
Yeah. So but their frontage is one fifth, deep agricultural uses, single family dwelling, one seventy five, two unit dwell, they do. I don't know if that's legal.
How do you do that? How do they do that separately?
It just, I don't know.
Like what's a what's an agricultural use? Only need a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, I don't know.
Probably they just.
It's confused.
I don't know if this would be legal, cuz you're supposed to have the same dimensional standards and that is a dimensional, so I would question that if I was. In development, I mean.
Thirty five percent lock coverage.
That that's.
The crazy question is, how how do we like guarantee that they're using the extra coverage to use it for? Not for it, it's what they're not for.
Well, you can't.
Just adding more buildings, adding more units and then causing more public spaces to be taken. And you're saying that. She's the one that makes sure that that doesn't happen?
Yeah, so what you're gonna do is.
And Amy, guard to to listen.
To get it. You could.
So my expectations from you, Amy, is that yes, they can have more, but it's only for more parking. And not for another three units and then every apartment.
They need a permit for the three units.
No, the only way, the only.
And that's why I'm concerned is like crowding of the streets.
As per vehicle, so it would be. You could have more lock coverage if you go to two parking spots per unit.
Okay, so specifically state.
Two, two spots per unit.
Yeah. So what we would say.
It doesn't matter how many units.
So instead of being mad at the state and saying, oh my God, you're only gonna make allow us to have four parking spots for a four unit, that's ridiculous, or six parking spots for a four unit, that's ridiculous, you say. I'll just, what the state wants towns to do is we'll just have more lock coverage or. If you want eight parking spots or ten parking spots.
Going toward.
I mean, it's it's hard to prove because the average person that come in probably they put together a site plan. And say, I'm building a four unit building, tear down this house, I'm gonna put a four unit in. And here are my eight parking spots, but they might eat up some of that lock coverage bonus they got for a bigger building.
That's what I'm worried about.
But it doesn't. As long as they got their eight parking spots, why do you care?
I don't care as long as you're doing that and not just making a bigger building and then having four spots still.
They can't. They have to, to get that lot coverage, they have to do four.
It's based on units, not the building.
Right, and so.
So.
So I would also need to think about how does that look like in our like community? Do you want it to be like there's no lawn for anybody to do anything?
I guarantee you, the village is built at higher density or a higher lock covers than fifty percent.
They don't have a lot of lawn. A lot of people don't have a lot of lawns in the village anyway.
They started going through the math.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we we didn't improve it if we didn't improve the surface layer, which would take months by the time we got the data from. Then, um you gotta know a storm art to the sea. My guess is sound up to eighty five percent cuz they've realized in like.
That's where they were.
That's where they were in a lot of spot, like all those new developments with those homes are really expensive and they're tight together. One right there, um harbor.
Harbor.
Those are on like eight acre lots and they're two thousand square foot homes, so they're.
And they're getting six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was. And so they're getting sixty homes on plenty cuz. Whatever they're doing in it with the rodents, eye blocks and all that.
How does that affect the environment of like all these hard spaces that others?
I don't know.
That's why we're putting in water.
You got sixty, you got an engineer. I'll ask.
Stormwater, you're like.
You're like the stormwater, uh, and cars.
How are you?
Well, you.
Good. Thanks, David. Thanks for your time.
Oh.
Concerned with the payday and this.
He's don't care. Remember you're.
I just got a shower, what?
My guess is. You'd be pretty excited if a development this size came into this one.
Financially, it's in the right spot.
Just a suggestion.
But you know, this is this is what those tight lines of like fire me.
That's kind of right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is.
Yeah, that's probably.
They're the big front.
Yeah, they don't, they don't.
Pretty well besides.
That's more than fifty percent.
Size. Probably.
Uh, be close.
It's gonna be.
A bit smaller, but yeah, with that pool and stuff, come on.
Yeah, is the pool an impervious surface?
Yeah.
Even though it holds water.
Like that house, the la- that one there is probably pushing.
These are probably a third, but you still want leave space if you're looking to put in a patio.
Wait, is a pool actually considered impervious surface?
Yeah, it's called a grace.
With the water.
With the water that go into.
But when you get too much water, you really take it down.
Yeah, um but you know, let's look at, let's look at the villages.
It's because it's interesting, I guess, on the community, why there's that behavior.
Yeah, but planning is going further and further and further.
Why is that the first thing to pop up?
A G?
Yeah, I was like.
I guarantee this.
You zooming in, the first line that popped up.
My, my point is, I think zoning.
Example of what we.
Zoning is going away from what we want everything to look like, because honestly, the zoning, I can tell this cuz. I'm not as married to this zoning profession as others. They created the housing crisis in this country by not allowing enough housing to be built on the land we can build on, acquiring more roads and more pipes if you allow. They made it so you needed that half acre lot, so it became that much more expensive to build. Levittown, American dream, that house was a two bedroom, seven hundred and fifty square foot home on an eighth of an acre. That, when we say the good old days, the nineteen fifties, when. Grandpa got back in World War Two, yeah. Those are small, those are small homes on small.
My house is a thousand square feet, make raise like. Four, five, four plus kids in that house.
Yeah, it's just we is we. And if you're looking at size of the household, the other thing is.
Pillars.
Now you have less, unless you look, but yeah, you've got. Not thinking back to a house in San, but are you locked? I mean, you're tight in the village here.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know, you're not.
There's more than one.
So the only way, when you don't have a choice. Cuz they're only allowed six parking spots, and I guarantee you can make six parking spots work for the four you're building on an eighth of an acre.
There are a lot of families that swan, the mom and dad said, don't, we give that all to the kids. And uh they didn't get a a half acre. But they got enough to the houses and pull water sewer and and build that house.
Have three.
They mind their neighbors, was once upon a time part of fighting.
Mostly.
I mean, you can, you guys can make decisions you want. I'm just saying like. You don't have to do the density or the lock covered bonus or not. I just. If you want people to have enough parking, not parking, cuz I guarantee you. I know for a fact on the. On a fifth of an acre, you can get a four plus six parking spots and a fifty percent lock coverage. And so if you want them to have more parking, so they're not parking on the streets and seeing where you got enough bonus. If not, they're just gonna go on the six parking spots or the four. Cuz I would argue with Amy and I hire a lawyer to say, well, on street parking is public parking.
Well, please. The problem is they're gonna have those parking spaces for and get the density bonus, and they're still gonna be parking on the street.
Well, I think, I think, I think what you have to do is if you give this.
For parking along.
Right.
That's true.
Luxury or leniency. Like on street parking, it's not like. Like.
You can't, you can't do that.
Can't do that, probably.
Why, look.
It's just half our street term lineup for parking is.
You know what they do when they don't wanna park it on the street? Put up no parking signs.
The other thing, the other thing you guys could do.
Trying to say.
You could do design like. Get rid of some of your. Not making setback is deep, but say no new parking spots in front of buildings. Uh cities do that, so parking.
You can't park.
Could you be parking only from like eight to three or something so that people can park there overnight?
We don't make the parking decisions in the bylaws. The select board makes your parking laws on the street.
Sort of coordinates.
Those are.
Are you speaking that wouldn't show people?
Yeah, your select board could do that. But I I think you could do the like, we prefer.
Really select board would more be related to.
Trust fees. The group.
This is gonna be the village.
Right.
But you could do, you could in this, again, about, you know, they're gonna work. I mean, you gotta remember, the incentive for the person to build is is the financials and they're gonna figure out how to get it done.
Right.
So I mean, whether you like it or not. And my guess is within ten years, you won't be able to regulate parking in the state.
So what I'm gonna say is within ten years too, there's gonna actually be a lot more housing in this one. Because that quarry is gonna run out of stone. And turn into a.
It's.
So I've been hearing they've been running out of stone like.
And they got rid of.
In a couple of years.
They only do the dust.
But isn't that gonna fix that up?
Only dust, it's concrete.
Isn't that gonna fix the stuff on our taxes and like? Is that gonna hurt us to lose a bit?
If you put three hundred houses in there, probably wouldn't notice a difference. Yeah. When you do that, say your taxes are all.
You stay over.
Doesn't seem to make a difference in what we pay for taxes.
Here's another secret, twenty.
Another secret is.
No, I'm just saying.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter how many houses you add, it's never gonna make your taxes go down because they use the services.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then people just spend the money.
Yep.
And then.
So the people that tax your school, so. So we're right, I'm here conflicting things. Oliver and Heather, don't stop the increased parking, Ross and Ed seem to like it.
No, I don't care about.
We wanna look at resurgence in the front lawn, parking and all. We're all okay, you that you just wanna.
Give them a bonus. If they want, if they wanna give more unit, more parking per unit.
But you wanna not pay, you want two parking spots per unit, if you do that. And they have to be like defined parking spots, like painted stripes, not like.
A parking spot, yeah.
But would you make it a parking spots in the front yard?
You could require to get the bonus, sorry, that paved, just for the side like paved. Marked spots that way.
Oh, I think that makes sense.
You know.
They would, they want that way so that.
Yeah, but if they will. But the thing about this, Heather. If they can get in. For. You know, cuz they're probably, under the current law, they might say, I'm gonna build four one bedroom units. Whatever, but two bedrooms pay more, so they will pay. More for the paving and the parking to get the extra parking to get a higher rent. And so offsets that cost in the long run, so financially, the math works for them.
Well, I also think as a landlord, as a landlord, you want painted slots with numbers so that you say, okay, apartment one gets lots wanted to. Instead of like first one, it gets closer to door, then it freaks mad at each other, it's common landlords fighting over it.
Make it reasonable and keep your tent on like.
Well, for example.
So mo- most landlords want enough parking, it's just they run into the lock coverage, and so what they'll do is they're not gonna turn down a unit that's not worth.
The cheapest thing that they're going is parking. In about a forty.
Could you, could you make parking in the front yard a uh. What you receive permission for?
Could, or.
From.
We could. Or you could make this party, again, this incentive, if if you have eight parking spots in the rear of the building. You have to park in the rear of the, like, we could really just.
Saying that they're gonna probably most of them, if they're that size, but parking.
Well, wouldn't that be form based zoning? What? Cuz we were, we were dealing with that a couple of years ago, the whole, when. The last time we did a bylaw review, right, they did a bunch of stuff and it was more like form based zoning, wanting to. We wanna see this instead of this, we wanna see that instead of that and. It didn't. Do us any good with dollar now. Um in my opinion, you know what I mean? Like they still built up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah.
So set.
That didn't fit the neighborhood.
Central business district.
It doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood.
Quarter acre lot, minimum lot.
Should be there, just.
Minimum lot frontage seventy feet, minimum lot depth seventy feet.
Where.
A central business district is established, it's kind of that.
Didn't we talk about what Oliver said about having it based so many feet from the riverway?
That wasn't much of a lake.
It's like, but I like the idea for everywhere.
Well, everything is measured from the right way.
Right, those are setbacks. This is, this is lot width and depth. So it is measured from the end of the right way anyway.
The only reason we did with the lake trunk it was so that we could protect the lake and get the buildings. Give you more room space between.
That was, that was building.
But this didn't make much sense to do it fifteen feet.
That was, that would be set, that'd be in this part.
Everything is better.
It usually more.
This is the law, this is before a building goes up, we're making a new law. How wide does it have to be? How deep does it have to be?
So you don't get odd shaped, so you don't get like a little pizza shape block.
We used to hear what was called bacon strips.
Right.
Right, bacon strips were skinny long logs.
Yeah.
For that one in uh San Alomos Town that rides all the way around the field to be ten acres.
Well, that's done on purpose, so they can't build.
Right, but I'm just saying, people could also do that to. You give a ton on the road and give everyone these weird boop de boop laws. Um. Lock covered, you already had a seventy five percent I didn't touch.
And that's.
I just did, I did a lot.
That's. Yep.
Um, this is, this is where the gunshot was.
What's the height of that?
The height we didn't touch, it's forty feet.
Yeah, that's. We didn't talk about.
That's forty feet, kinda small. How many, technically, how many store?
That's not four.
Cuz we're at thirty five and all the other districts aren't made.
Yeah, but your central dis- district is this more residential into. Your downtown.
Yeah, what I'm saying is if someone wants to come in and put up a.
Apartment building.
It's apartment building like the one on Lake Street.
You.
That's five stories.
That's five stories, so you'd be talking sixty feet.
That's what I'm saying, if.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, no, what I'm saying is.
If all of our other districts in that are rural are thirty five feet. I feel like our downtown should be visiting your downtown. Yeah, but that's what I mean, like that general cluster with public water and sewer should.
I'm fine with doing one, I'll get another one. I just.
So a typical story on a a commercial building, multiple units.
Have big tech floor.
At least, yeah, more than that, I mean, the. At least, yeah, more than that, I mean, depends on how it's built, if what its construction is, like meaningful.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So um I agree with Oliver that I'm open to that.
So another question on.
So we can, we don't have to measure from the ground or is it measured from the basement? Ground. So it's solid enough.
Um, we can do four stories. We could just say four stories. Not fifty fifty feet or forty eight feet or.
Because many of those buildings.
But. But I don't think that's a good idea either, because if you're putting up a.
Parapet.
Four story building and you're gonna have like AC units and stuff on the top, technically it's over height.
Exactly, and they typically will put parapet walls above to shield. And then you also gotta remember the elevator doghouse typically sticks above the roof. A fair amount because they have to have the equipment for the top of the elevator, so typically those elevator shafts and even some of the stairwells go above the roof floor. So they can access.
So so remember with this, if they do low income housing. They'll have one story more than you allow it.
So here's my point with.
So here's my point with.
First state.
So my point with Swan is. Is Swan isn't like St. Albans where it has like the hill rolling over your downtown and you get a nice view, you like this, you. Swan is flat, so if you build a seventy foot tall building, you're not blocking anybody's view. Quite frankly, no one's even gonna know unless you're standing right beside it, how all assists.
I I'm fine, I'm just, I'm just again, the point I'm saying it, see, we don't have to put that sort of in here about this, but the state law says they make it affordable housing.
Yeah.
They're allowed one more story than you allow, so you could, so what I'm just saying is in three years from now when.
So let's say.
Champagne Housing Trust comes in and says they're building a building in your downtown. And they want five stories, people are like, ah, there's only only allows four.
How does that work if you have a requirement on a story requirement?
Same thing. They can add one.
Maybe those ten feet.
No, they give one more story, so they give in their design fit three stories and you're thirty five feet, they get a four story. I'm just saying, if you want this to be. You wanna go three story, they add a four, if you don't care, I don't care, I just want to raise this so that in five years when this building shows up and people are mad about it. We talked about it on record, that this is a possibility.
Only thing you have to remember.
And you know, and some of those buildings, there's some people who can't afford another mark to supply. And this this.
And you might be okay, I just, the name, whoever, wherever it's gonna get built, the neighbor's gonna be mad.
We gotta remember services.
Or you know, it's just.
Gotta remember services. And at that height, what's that?
You got a hundred foot ladder truck.
Yeah, but a hundred foot ladder truck does not mean they can reach a hundred feet in the air. A hundred feet of stick. You gotta do some G O, G O B truck.
That's they go straight up in the air, which I burned down there playing with it.
Yeah. Oliver, you can't get that. To the roof, the fire truck has to happen if you're in a building.
So.
No, yeah, yeah.
A hundred feet of stick is not necessarily a hundred feet tall.
I'm saying, we have a hundred foot of stick on a. Right now.
So the town of St. Albans had a hundred foot.
Yeah, but we go seventy, a hundred foot.
Oh, I'm not saying we went to seventy, I'm saying go to like, go to like fifty or sixty.
A hundred foot of stick is.
The town of St. Albans is gonna look at it too right now because it's their new ones that just passed the regional planning review, so like. It's gonna pass a few. They do four stories, back, this is what they do.
So.
Four story, the max had a fifty, whichever is shorter.
So my question is, is there way to.
They can allow that room for that stuff that Ross was talking about.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is there a way to say like four stories or like whatever amount of stories plus. Extra room for, or just like.
Copy and paste.
Yeah, do you guys like that though?
I I.
More stories and more place.
We're like, this would be their commercial growth center, which would be your downtown.
That's their version of downtown, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And that, I'm guessing. They may not have, but they. They have a very sharp planner who's their chair and then their thought process, they probably have a ladder truck, they have sixty feet probably being what, to Ross's point.
Yeah, but this is the village, we're not, not, or.
Yeah, but their growth center is their village.
So like, it's the Southern Grove District, is that?
You could make it the same.
You could, yeah, you could make it the same.
I like that, but you read almost higher, obviously.
That being, then it gets back to on the point of.
The difference. The difference however is.
There could be a secret in there.
With the Southern Grove Center is we have much more real estate. So I'm not saying I don't agree that it shouldn't, it should be taller.
Yeah.
But the Southern Grove Center, think of. Maple Tree Place, Williston, you know, those buildings are very tall.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, right.
No, because they have the, they have the expansion growth, those buildings are shorter, it's at times. Depending on. Price of steel, price of concrete, et cetera, sometimes it's easier to build shorter. Out and then build out than it is to build uh narrower.
Because.
Thigh, also the pollinators.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's against like sprinklers.
Uh, electric.
They're building just like.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, so we're supposed to stay on and some great day able to live through it.
Well, we have one too, yeah.
And and other.
But I don't think the city had a hundred.
There's a little one maybe.
The city does.
I don't believe it.
Um.
It would not.
So I'll make that, also stylistically, do you guys like those tables better than the words laid out or?
I kinda like that.
These are. Like this?
This is fine.
Yeah.
Is that technically a table, it's just the.
Yeah.
Thing.
They're all, too busy if you start putting all the wood in.
Um.
Yeah, if you put the.
Wait, can you scroll back up for a second so I read it? No, 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 read that with pardon.
That's interpretable though.
Um, this is where the gun shop is. And you currently had a thirty percent lock coverage, I bumped it to fifty.
Same old one? What would say?
What's the name?
Thirty five or eighty five.
What's the name of the district?
This is, this is basically seventy eight, heading from. The the bridge out.
So I'm.
And also, we're gonna read on the map once we decide what these districts are, so you might say we're gonna shrink that village, that district out.
I'm curious, I don't know how the lots. Buy or it's because the buildings were there before zoning, but like you look at like. Art Ford, the boat place.
Would not be allowed to be built today.
Yeah, they're like a hundred percent lot.
Yes.
So they're just like that because they predate.
You could not build the villages Swan, you cannot build the city of St. Albans, you could not build the beautiful downtowns in Ramon today. Under the zoning standard, and there's actually a good.
Cory loves that stuff.
No, but, no, but I do love like.
Cory loves to break together.
No, they show like, but you know those nice row houses you see in like Boston and other places where people like Brooklyn?
Yeah. Maryland.
The whole point is like, there's a town in Massachusetts, I just saw, of the whole town of eighteen thousand people, six lot to be able to develop that way. Under, so all these things people, but people talk about their downtowns, I love my downtown, I want a coffee shop, but I want a flower shop. You couldn't build that today, so if you can't build that stuff today that we all talk about what we love. It isn't building, why are we doing it?
So how does like, uh. How do these car dealerships get away with, like the new ones?
Yeah, each Toyota owns it, own a land.
Toyota does, but like. Uh, Kadad doesn't really, new cars building that huge.
They, so they get, they get density, they get lock card bonus for buildings to stormwater structure.
Elsewhere.
And then they.
Well, I was just curious, cause they don't.
It's like energy.
Yeah, but I was just like, cause they definitely, I mean, like. I know that Handys owns a ton of land in the back, but like. Kadad doesn't really own any.
Kadad had to build a big stormwater fund.
Yeah, but I'm just saying as far as like. Lock coverage wise, they.
Um, I mean, the new four dealers, this town just increased it eighty five percent probably because they gave a few guarantees and they're probably just like, you know what?
Letting go.
Everyone complains about the car dealerships, but they pay people really well.
Yeah.
They're good service and they bring people to their town and everyone's like, oh, we don't need another car dealership, be like, well, that's fifty.
You wanna look at the big picture.
There's fifty one hundred employees making a livable wage.
Well, you'd have to look that, I do that especially, I mean, it's. Handys is a big business, but they're local, but like you get these ads and the the new cars that are. Companies from out of state, they're spending millions to look before they build. They're not coming here for anything. Right, so.
Down by the, by the gun shop across the road.
Yeah.
There's a water, water issue drainage that's all of that.
Yeah.
And it's when the state, the state will not give them permission. To hook into their water.
To grow.
Grass or whatever that, cause they wanted to hook onto that, drain that water into the the state.
Yeah, that's, isn't that's a state issue?
And um.
Well, it's cause of the, the lower road, that's there's no cover there, that's the issue, and they won't let it pour.
Okay.
So we wanted more.
I. I would say in the village and in some of these more commercial districts, I would be fine with going more, knowing that other communities are doing it as well. But I mean, it's not just us.
What, so you're buying all, so the, to Ross's point, you're looking at buying a lot on seventy eight here in Swan to build your business. On Route seven in St. Albans, St. Albans is double the price as the location, but they also allow ninety percent lock coverage, you know, if you wanted to come here because it was more affordable, you could.
Why is, so why is the height on this district less than?
That was your traditional, we just.
Yeah, but I was just curious if we raised that other one.
So this is more of your, this is your, this is your transitional commercial district, which is your neighborhood, so like it's easy.
Theory. Should, should we bump this one to forty? Or forty five, I mean, we bumped the other one up some.
So forty or three stories?
Yeah, that's right.
I I would be fine seeing that lock coverage go as sixty.
That's what I was thinking, sixty.
Does anyone know what like, they were actually.
I I'm, this.
Can't see what.
A lot of them double.
I was just curious, they, they, they've been to it, quite a few meetings asking, and I can't remember that they actually said like a number, that they just wanted more, yeah, it's like, I don't.
They just. But that's less about them and I'm thinking more about the district.
Yeah.
Thinking about. Boat place, thinking about. The car dealership, thinking about the car repair shop right there, thinking about the truck. The two grain mills.
Probably where the Riviera was.
What's that?
Probably the Riviera was. And then carry.
They have a.
Now you need six, sixty, but at least they'll, I need to build something reasonable, that's not a lot.
Whoa, and, but you think about, think about like. Hoolin. Do they have any grass on that piece of?
Well, even your American Legion's probably ninety percent lock coverage.
Right. Car deal, does car deal have any lawn compared to?
Well, you could build a memorial auditorium. With that parking that all that that Gordon did. And those new, like that wouldn't be allowed because you.
Oh, thanks.
But it was already built.
Right. Already had the pavement.
So do you, do you know what St. Albans number is, eighty five?
Uh, I was thinking sixty, I mean.
I can kind of relate by with the like ninety percent lock coverage, like in like that main area by Scamper's. Like all those buildings over there, sure, around the green, I don't mind squeezing stuff in, but I really like the idea of. People being on neighbors backs, like.
But these are mostly businesses.
I'm proud of the village.
So industrial, you allow sixty now, St. Albans town allows eighty five, so again, if you're looking to be in the industrial park, you probably manage it. Honestly, we should probably.
Well, like he said, isn't there ways around that by putting in? Like catch ponds and.
Town, the town used to allow, it looks like they got rid of it and just made it eighty five, is that just?
Probably just having a room for a.
As.
The state, the state's still gonna be involved in that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I'm saying.
So, but. And this, and the other district to me that we're talking.
Cause there's always their act fifty.
Yeah.
So act fifty is gonna get triggered. State's gonna get involved, then those stormwater issues become an issue as well, that's all out of our hands, so. It's not like we've gotta be worried about allowing them to do it.
Yeah.
Properly.
Well, what I'm, what I'm thinking about is like the grain mills, the gun shop, or not so much gun shop, boat.
Lumber.
All that, all that down through there.
Lumber does have.
They already are at like full lock coverage, so what does it matter if we make it? Seventy five, seventy, because. Almost every business is there, it's already at a hundred.
That's the way I.
So here, they require two acres basically for their industrial, but they have a different industrial park than you guys, they do allow. Setback seventy five, that's a front just two hundred, you're better than their, they do, they allow seventy percent. Max lock coverage in this block. Further industrial, you allow.
I'm assuming they have to leave, I mean, you can't.
You allow sixty, I would at least match the set, I would.
But you're losing a lot of housing there, right?
No, they do.
It's in there, yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah.
St. Albans? In St. Albans?
In Swan, and we have housing.
Well, we have some, I don't think it's.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't care if it's just like, okay, all the factories don't wanna have any grass, maybe, okay, well, if you have some kind of water filtration situation like that or somewhere. Then, okay, but it's not really.
You may be feel, they allow P U Ds.
If there's housing and it's like, I feel away from. You know, hate with.
There's.
Well, I, I remember that was all, all of those houses.
I'm thinking of channel of the door.
Shit for, shit for.
Where's the gun shop at?
You can leave, we have those.
Yeah.
What?
Not the Ross of the play, like you catch it, right?
I told you that's how my retirement plan is, right next to Manajeris and Peerless and most places.
He bought that seventy thousand lot like ten years ago, that turned seventy grand, Oliver's been sitting like, have you ever?
Have you ever?
Ain't it?
Have you ever like buy that place on that break? It's like a hundred fifty people standing outside smoking cigarettes. Like Ben and Jerry's all the, through the sound of the industrial park.
Oliver, yeah, this is.
So they spending their paychecks at Oliver's sexually oriented business next door.
It's, it's, it's a, it's. Ira, we're, we have to. Today, they allow most.
I'm not laughing, I'm serious.
They allow multi use.
It's not uncommon.
No, you, I know.
Vigoraries.
So.
I never thought.
The industrial parks.
Burbage, garbage, I was like.
Seriously.
So again, you guys, will you allow in your industrial park, there is more intensive. Industrial district is encouraged to, a whole range of industrial many factors associated uses. Um, you don't allow housing in here.
This is ours.
Yes, this is yours, you don't allow.
Okay, so we don't allow it, but it's fair. It's just.
Well, it's my grandfather did.
So.
Uh, you could build a new house in that district unless you're replacing whatever.
Okay, so the. Different percentage isn't really gonna happen.
That is why.
Unless those houses that are already there want to expand.
Be comfortable.
Or.
Are they?
Put a building built up or, you know, an accessory structure or.
That's where I've heard it, is if those, those properties wanted to. Build seventy five percent of their property.
Can you pull up our map?
Right.
But they only, they give sixty percent.
We can't change our map.
That's true, because we do have.
We can't, we can't make that long little spot of houses residential instead of. Industrial.
You might not want to because of, you probably are trying to.
Absolutely.
Well, you're, you know, what you're probably trying to incentivize to is someone to buy up those houses to turn it into industrial space.
Because we do have a chunk of property that have had a business in here.
It's not like a.
This map, sorry. Um, we do have a section of property that we've had the owners in here because they are struggling with the industrial use. And would potentially like to do some. Yeah, um, over, up, right there.
Right.
Over here, but that would be redrawn.
So we, we could potentially redraw the map because, and they are right, that land there is. It's difficult to put large scale stru- structures on because of the tabus.
I can't.
It's not, there was, it was a little wack, but there's also the other end of the, of the ledge.
Yes, great.
Right.
So they literally can't like put a big building in because it's not like physically possible. But they could potentially chop up three or four, five, maybe six houses. Because they're smaller and you don't take up big areas.
But I think the part everyone's worried about, how there's like out here. Trying to get in drive and then probably.
Which is pretty well built out.
Which you're not gonna be able to take the, you're not gonna be able to build a house in the so quarry anywhere. So that's true, you'll have to come back and redevelop it.
I mean, I would assume if there's no water stream there.
You ain't gonna build it in the holes, it's gonna be full of water.
Can we get a Google Earth of? What it looks like, I'm trying to give you, they have like another hundred years of stone.
They changed around what they were maybe decades ago.
They were, cause they're hauling in line.
But they only, they only taking powder out of there.
Yeah, they're hauling all the stone they saw out there.
No.
That's not the case coming from, uh.
The stone that's.
They changed the stone size.
The stone, yes, the stone that's getting hauled in is Ireland and Pike, you're no longer buying stone from them because they're not making the thing.
And we are taking out.
Yeah.
And Ireland Pike have their own ports.
So see, it's hauling in, it's either they're hauling in, or no, I, I scored, they're hauling in. Like, something like that.
Yes.
Because they're not making.
That's why I say it was expensive.
Go down, I think it's down.
Because it's gone up.
I'm thinking. Line.
All of these homes, like.
Yeah, those homes.
Like that pelletized line, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, because so, that's what never made any sense to me, is they sell pelletized line, but you're right.
That's why. That's how we.
You're right. You got a solid.
But you're gonna allow seventy five to Lottington or you're gonna allow.
So probably about a some.
But now in our region, they're probably all pretty close.
They're pretty close. But would you might, with that increased lot size, you might.
John somebody, like a bat.
You know, some of these places may, sticks might buy up these houses. I think. We never know.
Yeah, it was pretty small and old, some of them.
Uh.
What's that, like? Is that the village in the?
Yeah, I like.
That's where that was.
That's his building.
That's probably Foskey.
Yeah, it's like, well, look at that, and the Swan lumber has zero grass.
Swan, oh, they literally have no grass.
Swan number has no grass.
Unless.
How nice.
Very, four years has very little, that's how he looped out of it, that's how he's getting, you guys will just let him make an apartment lot at this point, because.
Well, they park it.
Yeah, we're just, we're just making it permanent, it's a whole ton of metal on top of it, I don't know, it's not permanent. I don't know why this keeps getting less.
Killed weeds.
Alright.
Right, so if it's around the same type, it's not that, that way.
What we'll see happening, Heather, is any of those houses in that neighborhood? That. That do potentially sell or do get to a point where there need to be torn down, you'll potentially see the industrial growth. Over more housing grows growth. The other thing with that area is. Very wet. Yes. Hold them up.
So then you look to your point, the state's not gonna allow them to do.
Rebuilding or expand.
Be easier to put in an industrial.
If they build if they can, then it would be to try and put in a house with basement. Do water.
Okay.
Where is that?
Industrial.
They like they gun shop very next to.
Right.
Right, and had made some flood.
Well.
Those slopes.
Everything, everything hits seventy-eight and it stops.
Also.
Right.
But if it is an issue of the water being flooded, then they won't let it.
You think that something could be done, but obviously the state's not. Working with.
They must have a ledge there or something, because it's not like there's water on top of the ground, like that just can't get through.
It could be it could be blue play.
Yeah. That's what's holding on.
Yeah, um.
So if he expands at that gun shop, how's that gonna help this water problem?
It's it actually probably would because they could.
Stone.
He he wants a stair to um. To drain it.
That's not, uh, we can't help them there.
Right.
Um, okay.
So I'm gonna say I can't understand them.
So seventy-five percent.
Well, I I think any of the disc downtown, when I say downtown. The industrial neighborhood like commercial village districts like that. We wanna go to seventy-five, sixty, seventy-five percent easily, I mean.
Go sixty-five, it's two-thirds. Roughly.
The.
She still have a third of the property isn't it?
That's a lot, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's it's amazing what you can fit on a lot.
I would say Ed's probably close to your house. How much backyard do you have?
He's got a backyard.
Uh, I got a backyard, but the 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 house behind me used to be part of that backyard. Long before I arrived there.
But I mean, I bet you're well over fifty percent lot coverage. Your house.
Oh, yes.
But I would say you're closer to.
It was a large and um.
Yeah, you're closer to sixty, seventy-five.
Didn't like chat out there, I got the.
And you have paved driveway.
The.
You got paved driveway.
Paved driveway, yeah.
The next one is commercial.
We're we're sticking with what I'm getting at is in your house, perfect, you know what I mean for in the village, it's a it fits the neighborhood well, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can't play baseball only backyard, some places can, but that's.
But you still want people to be able to put a roof over their head and have home ownership and build equity or.
Sure.
But they blow the line anyways.
In the long run, that's your time, that's your tax base during the preseason.
Um. Commercial district, used to be commercial like industrial, we're gonna change the name. I added things from TSA, cause I thought. We highlighted, we were debating getting rid of the TSA, which is just circulating.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Um, and so I did allow, which I know will make some of them have motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle service station, lodging establishments, professional service and the transit facility. Just so that way we could, everything that TSA district had that.
Is in there.
Was in there because we were thinking, contemplating, just give it to the TSA district, because it was an extra district and it was really only the four corners of your.
We're saying, I think. No, I think we need to look at adding um, personal service and professional service to a lot more districts.
Commercial district.
It kind of is.
I'm talking.
And all.
Right, and people need to be able to do that in, I believe, all the districts as long as they.
Yeah, like look at Steve Marcus here, I know it's not like, is it Bob Farrar's in all the law office and he's looking, like you go to his house and I mean.
Have them. Right, well, one of.
You need your own lawyer and.
Somebody wants to do therapy, obviously.
If you find some has and.
Which is therapy, counseling, you know, stuff like that, that should be allowed.
Right. Do you wanna do any kind of parking? That that's usually the concern around that is.
Mm-hmm. Well, if you, we need to look at the definition because a lot of those businesses only see one client at a time.
Yeah.
But obviously, we've got to take a look at the definition and and review that.
Okay. Maybe put it under conditional use so that the D R B would have had a chance to review that, but not make it so it's difficult for them to approve, just say like. Where my brain goes, it was, you know, a a bad corner or whatever, and there's a little bit of traffic, people coming in, just giving the D R B the opportunity to like.
Yeah, right. Take a look at it.
Piles in the foot.
Yep.
And levers.
You want, so you want me to treat it like they care and make it a conditional use in all districts?
Should.
Should we make it? But should it be like only a. Or I see it only as conditional use would be like the part of it. And so like if you have over.
How do you quantify that?
That's like, I I would say more than one client at a time, but I don't know if that.
But I'm just thinking, let's just say they have clients after clients, you gotta they gotta you gotta initially, they gotta at least two clients.
Two guys, two parks.
Yeah.
The person in, the brokerage was up fifteen minutes.
Right.
That's.
Or if you're a therapist.
But you've got, we've got to look at, let me look at the judgment.
Yeah, but. Professionals, services.
Yeah, they yes, they're driving in.
Yeah. The barber shop, personal services, barber shop, like stuff like that.
How many, how many do I want to park?
Act.
That could be like four people.
Right, yeah.
And notes. Lawyer, I mean, we're all thinking like traditionally hang a shingle outside our house and that's our, you know, you all go back to prison, the doctor worked out of his house, the lawyer worked out of their nose.
Right. Right. Right.
All that, yeah.
And then they allowed everybody to park, leave their car plenty.
Yeah.
But talk talk about, I had a strange request from somebody this past weekend. Asking about the upon the. Robin on Drive, that um. Parking area.
For that, for that rail trail.
Yeah, rail trail. Is that? In this okay or?
Wonder if that fits as a public parking.
Any parking lot that's necessarily owned is public parking.
I mean, it's not, I don't like, park is really, I'd say.
And.
I'm I'm here, I'm within a quarter acre.
Yeah, no, we we actually told them they couldn't park over there.
Doesn't mean it's not public parking, for the definition under the law, it.
It's public parking.
You can't, I mean, I can't park it.
Then, uh, well.
No, I but.
Put a public park.
You know what I mean, like, if if somebody was parking here to run into the store, would anyone say anything?
It was, I think it was somebody from that building that was using.
I also think that parking area out there on your street, I mean, I was having a park, a lot of parking, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, and then the argument that I was, that I thought should be clarified when I talk about school parking, like school parking. So basically, what is your overall parking, right, like? This would happen, so the scenario, a couple lives in a one-bedroom apartment, they have one parking spot, the guy work or the woman works, whoever, one of the partners works. Um, days, so that they're gonna park here by eight o'clock, five-thirty, and they're gonna be gone according to leaves, like. That happens a lot.
So that that this, this the. Parking area up there on the Robin on Drive. Fits into this, all right.
We don't define public parking unless we put a definition on public parking.
Yeah, we don't want it.
Um, so.
Yeah, you you can't be in a bar for that.
I mean, I'm sure they're not gonna have a parking.
Rail trail building and all of that stuff.
If they put a building up, they do. They were talking about putting facilities there, but then I think, and don't quote me, but I think they decided. Um, to use Fortaleza because of the damage that people could do to the building after spending all that money, and you know it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Just concrete walls.
Uh, can we get rid of, so we're gonna get rid of the travel service area?
Merge it into.
Commercial.
I.
I'll leave the language here till we're doing the map, but for some reason you guys throw a fit, we can put it back in, I'll just leave it as a big.
I. Yeah, but we're gonna accept rules a bit now.
Um.
I think, I think it's so similar, it's. At this point, it's all blended, maybe thirty years ago. You can see a definitive like difference, but this, not not at this point.
Not this far.
Uh, Southern Grove District, we are now to, I didn't touch anything here, because I just figured this would be a conversation after we were.
What's the height, so?
So height, we have thirty-five feet.
This. So I think we should increase that to.
Then we do sixty-five.
We did, we did four stories of sixty feet.
Four stories of sixty feet, yeah.
But that's. I'll do the St. Albans Town language.
I think it'd be those buildings in Burlington, maybe we don't like this, but those apartments in Burlington, I mean.
And they play this too.
I love the way that it's.
Which ones?
Um.
I like the ones right when you're when you're getting right on the interstate.
Yeah, Ireland, yeah, I've seen the thing, there's a one.
You go beyond, there's a Burlington exit.
Like you're doing it on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, those are all Irish.
All different colors.
Yes. Yeah.
It's really classy.
That's a good way to use. Could I go on, what was used to play.
It's housing. I see you're saying that nobody wants and then.
Could I go out to build those up here, take up the.
Don't.
It's not an art, no.
I know.
Oh, it'll be it'll be nice, it'll be open and private. Oh.
Is is there any idea, have we ever found that there's something that we give a bonus to somebody if they tear down an old house, pull up a move? Or put up.
I mean, the intent is there now, you buy a single-family home on any lot in village, it can become a four unit. If you want that.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, or you got two people, I buy the neck, my neighbor's lot. Then I tear both of them down and put a four-story building on.
Or they put them in.
Ah, that's.
Like the way.
I I don't know, I mean, I I was just.
Some big mansion in the village.
Well, like in, I'm saying, lake, we don't want that. I was actually thinking about that, I'm like, is there some way to protect it from, is there a definition for.
Uh. Yeah.
Is.
Well, maybe.
What what does that say for building coverage?
Uh, I'm sure. Building coverage will change to lot coverage development, heard of on the view board review. So basically, you're allowing the D R B to say. Whatever they want it to be, which probably sucks for your D R B because if they don't.
Just make it eighty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was gonna say, anyway.
Max, it should max, honestly.
Um, yeah, I.
It's, I think, well, with your permission, let me take my St. Albans Town hats.
Make.
At the interstate exit right there.
Should we go over that though, to make it more feeling?
Well, we can, but like, let's use that as our motto, because in all honesty, you wanted to blend in the St. Albans Town.
No, I I don't disagree at all.
Well, I just think by having that, that they're gonna say seventy-five for somebody, somebody else is gonna come in, they're gonna tell them sixty-five, and then they're gonna be like, what do you mean?
What do you mean? Definitive.
St. Albans. Yeah, so I think we go.
Max St. Albans.
That benefits people that are already, basically, right?
Max St. Albans and then we'll incentivize it.
Right, and help standard, they can expand.
Yeah, and tractor supplies and swine.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'd be really curious if someday they got water and sewer there, tractors flow, still sell a lot of their septic system.
There you go.
You know, you know, you know what law?
Yeah.
It's huge.
And. I think the houses are priced, but like the. That lot there, that that they're trying to sell their house with that one garage, it cost them a high.
But they subdivided.
Yeah, it's like a third of an acre.
Well, I thought, yeah, but he he had a subdivision in that area somewhere, but I don't know, Mark St. Pierre.
Yeah, it's subdivided where the white house is.
That from the rest of it, or did he subdivide?
It took. From the last event.
So he didn't, because it said two lots, I didn't know if he took like the house and building and stuff.
Yeah, I've got a house and an acre lot or whatever, and the other is the other lot.
Yeah, okay.
So Jimmy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I see they started the other.
Um, so I will rewrite this to met, so. You guys don't.
Subdivision for targets, so.
What?
I'm just laughing. You want nothing to do with automotive in this district.
In what district?
Why?
In the Southern Grove District, oh.
Oh, you have vehicle sale and servicing, what you do is.
Can we add anything but government buildings?
We were.
Correctly.
Well, you're looking at.
You do have as conditional use, it's not as permanent use.
When we.
No, it's.
Might be adding more, but they keep, they keep getting away with everything.
Yeah, but they haven't come to get permit.
But twenty, that's fifteen years ago, we're starting, automobile, like that, something I haven't wanted.
Government.
Third yard.
Getting a permit and getting a permit. You can't stop the.
So maybe.
They have.
Coming here.
Auto deal.
It's not a permanent use, they can't.
Well, I just I just saw, you do have, I didn't see that first, have a vehicle, automobile, can't, no. Because you think about it, you have a ton of dealerships there, why wouldn't you want a service like a player shop or a.
On more.
That's the state.
And it's, there's enough room in there, and if I was building a brand-new house, in that area, like, I I wanna be back.
Is there a.
Yeah.
Here. It looks like there's one or all, like, so I don't see an.
So so the the question.
It might be turned that. I'm not sure, he's gotten two permits, one was for the salt shed garage, and I think the other is for the.
You. Yeah.
We have to look at.
Ah, it's total totally up to you. I don't know how we define storage facility.
I would, honestly.
But no, 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 so I think one of the worst things Fairfax has done, and I know they can't, they took their down, having now it's all storage units, those mini storage units.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, caused and did sounds down, I think.
That was a. So there are people stuff storage units in because they make a lot of money for the space, like I totally get that.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want storage facility or do you want us to maybe do like a.
No.
Call this like a commercial storage facility, something, because like if Amazon is coming in to put a warehouse in, that's different.
I consider it a storage facility.
That's not a storage facility. If you look at the definition.
Warehouse.
Okay, so like that.
The warehouse.
Do you want a fortress now storage facility in your Southern Grove Center? Cause I can see now with what's going on with the city, and the next worst thing am I.
There'll be a bunch of.
If you got a bunch of any storage, it's still there, and that's your Southern Grove District.
At least, at least they build things and then. At least they pay taxes.
If I knew that there was gonna be water available, I'd say no.
You pay the bill.
But. Here's the thing.
And don't you water stores, you're putting storage.
The state is saying, no water from them. It would cost us a hell of a lot, run it down the line up there.
It's not possible, that's out of the question.
Yeah, I mean, that is not, so why why not allow?
I mean.
That's what, I just.
I know, if you could completely develop that land and all it would take was to run that water and sewer, you could tip from that like that, it would pay for itself so fast.
Well, yeah, well.
You guys could have a billion dollars of grandness on that land if you did it right, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be cheaper, well, you can't, it would be cheaper, I I think it'd be more cost-effective to put in a completely new system out there, find a way to do it other than running from.
You can do, water would be the issue.
A frog.
The water's already out, yeah, the state brought the water out, yeah.
Right. But the sewer, it would be easier to put a sewer plant out there than the triangle here across.
Which they can.
You can do sewers, so you you do what they do is decentralized, you basically what would happen, Oliver, is you probably take twenty acres of that and make a really, really big septic system.
Like a mound?
Yeah, they do that, and they call it community septics, decentralized septics.
Yeah.
It's like a three hundred acres.
Yeah.
But you.
Three, there's more than that.
There's two hundred in that one field where they put.
But but what you, what I would do, like, if you did this right, and we're planning this, and I'm an engineer, you take that lower part behind, uh.
Lotments.
Behind tractors fly.
In total home center, and you put a big septic, and let it all gravity feed down.
We can.
Cause I thought about it when I worked at the town of St. Albans, cause I was like, how do we get a decentralized system? Up there if we ever had a breakaway from the city.
I'm just.
If I go to that corner that you like, it all run there, it's the interstate, so who cares if it's a bunch of septic. You'll look green grass and keep it green, those twenty acres, from an environmental perspective, it's pretty, but if it all run there, that's what I would do with it. Um, because in that land, you can decentralize it, so it's can do up to, they can do, we're looking at doing one today, I've been twenty million dollars, do four hundred homes.
Especially if it's not housing, if it's more public services, I'm thinking stores, shopping, things of that nature. Intensive use less, if it's not manufacturing, than housing, yeah.
Really, I just figured the amount of people that.
So.
Circulate.
They use their bathroom.
I don't.
They're not showering, it's water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You probably can get, it'd be a big expense, but you put in a, um. You put in impact fees to pay for it, and I'm not.
Maybe make a digester. Could you do that with people, vice, human vice, I don't know.
You can, if I'm an engineer, just figure out how to make it legal, I think.
So everybody delete storage container?
It figured out.
Huh?
Are we gonna delete storage container?
I would kill, let's give it a storage container and stay.
Party container.
Continual facility.
Storage facility, let's delete storage facility.
You're gonna, are we getting that one or no?
Not storage containers.
I.
Oh, it should be conditional, storage facilities, I'm.
That would be.
I'll do it, let's leave it now and think about it, I'll do one last to be wrong with this.
I mean, it's a conditional use, so the board can say no.
Yeah, really, they're gonna be.
I, I mean, if so, if it's allowed, it's allowed, it's a conditional use, really.
So it needs to make sure it follows the conditions.
It just gives them the opportunity, yeah.
I mean, I, if we really want it to be a place where there's residential opportunities over there. To be built, and we don't wanna keep things like that, that are gonna chunk up everything, so that they can't.
Yeah, but. Think about Maple Tree Place.
So.
So drive through Maple Tree Place, you drive that past a bunch of storage facilities, a tractor dealership. Channel fifteen, all of that, and then you continue, and right behind them is a whole bunch of houses.
Right.
Be ninety-six homes.
It's.
Ninety-six homes?
Well, it's also done, I have ninety-six.
When it's done.
Yeah, but they're.
Well, he's, yeah, I was gonna say.
They're like.
That's all I can do is ninety-six then?
Yeah, cause thirty acres is not able to be built on. Wasn't land trust, but Actu fifty required it, so we kind of see it highway. So he's only.
So it's not because he's maxed out the property, it's because.
But there's so.
That could have changed.
That would, that I'd still love to get out of there, but another. I think you've done like two, three hundred. That that's the county St. Albans is next, like, boom, he doesn't own a lot of land, but like, all that, that all that land gets developed.
He'll. They're gonna connect a lot.
Well, Tyler, then you have Tyler owns a lot of it still, and then some other guy owns straight behind, oh, the gun shop guy owns his lay-in house and.
Yeah, but you have.
And there's another ten acres there, and then there's home.
There's some of the side horses. That Macy's own too, for rent of.
Of course. As well. So.
It's right next to.
So right now, you would allow permitted uses. Childcare home, group home, home occupation. Childcare home, group home, home occupation, recreation outdoor, single family dwelling, allowed and accord, and then you guys have this, so that everything else is conditional, and that would be assisted living.
Assisted living growth district?
Yeah.
I would want to leave some of those over for me, I mean, it's up to you guys, but.
Bank. I mean, they're gonna need act two fifty to to.
That's why.
Well, and a lot of those things, the reason is why can't that removed door, assisted living center, that should be immediately available. Lighting, permitting.
It would be our town plan of making it easier for that to develop by making it a permanent use versus conditional.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think you guys really lay out the vision of your, looking at this just now, like nothing in here screams Williston, even though this is your Williston, you're talking about a bank, a bed and breakfast.
There's a bank out there.
Childcare facility, no, I'm just laughing, like a con- a conference center would be cool. Like convenience store, filling station, uh conversion of a single family dwelling, cottage industry, garden center, laundry mat, laundry pouch, mixed use movie theater, multifamily dwelling.
Sporting sport.
But you don't allow like a mall, or a, not like a mall, but you know what I mean, you would allow like a strip mall or something.
How do you allow?
That's mixed use, huh?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, but your mixed use has to.
Have housing.
It has to, whatever your mixing use has to be allowed in that district.
I'm just, like you don't even have re- when I got a mixed use, I'd you go shop with.
I'm saying.
I agree, right there, retail sales.
Yeah, but you gotta make sure that those two are.
Yeah.
Service organization, parking lot.
But I feel a lot of those things should be moved over to acceptable use.
Permitted, you mean?
Permitted, permitted.
But the thing is, is everything.
The night party, conditional use.
It is permitted, but they just have to come in and talk about it.
Yeah.
But then they also have to pay two hundred, three hundred dollars. Two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars.
They probably have to, they try to, they probably have to pay two hundred dollars for someone putting in, that's ideally what we want in our Southern Road District, they aren't gonna worry about that.
But I have a million dollars.
But I want assisted living there.
No, I understand, but somebody that's never been up to, but assisted living is gonna have a fifty thousand dollar architect, and have a twenty thousand dollar.
It's an easy.
It's a live, yeah.
No, but to the point is like you still may, an assisted living may wanna say, want this, wanna review like the trees that they're gonna plant, and the the make sure that, so that they're not, when the next lot gets developed,
Yeah.
the assisted living, people living there are gonna take. The.
Some permitted use would be like, yeah, whatever, do whatever we want, now I'll give you permit, but it's a conditional use, and you have to lay out, I mean, that's what I think, and then I'm gonna go differently.
I can issue the.
That would work, so.
Now, that's what, but conditional use, that's gotta go before the development review board.
Permitted means.
I just can't.
You're walking down fire, that's your goal.
Because I'm conversation, but it's permitted, they come in and it's any, you can give a permit.
If they need the regulations.
That's conditional.
Um permitted.
Permitted.
Permitted. What's the difference between conditional?
Conditional, they have to go before the development review board.
So the developer review board might just say, are you shielding your lighting, are you, if you maybe moved it, could you maybe?
But it's screening here.
There's also a project potentially.
What's that like? What's that like being?
It also gives your neighbors an opportunity to go down.
It's inconvenient, is it inconvenient? Like, does it benefit?
It can't be inconvenient.
It benefits the town, to so the.
It benefits the county.
There's a.
Well, I I I I think for.
It makes you like, it's fittable for people that want to.
I I think.
No, no.
They are going through act two fifty to build assisted living.
Yes.
That's where.
And they are going through such a process, it's gonna be.
This is the, this is like K-Log, although for for a commercial district, they already base this, that's not a problem, where I have a problem with that is in other districts for smaller projects. That's where I think you should have more just permit.
Like you shouldn't need a conditional use, we put a shed on your lot on the lake.
You shouldn't need a conditional use to have a corn maze in an agricultural district when you don't have any building base.
Outdoor recreation. I hope that's not true.
It is true.
It is true.
What? You need a permit in order to have a corn maze?
You have to go before the DRB to have a corn maze, which you shouldn't have.
Right, that would work, you can put it, but I just.
It's it's agriculture. It's not.
It's part of the wraps rules.
This parking.
How do we delete that?
Exactly.
So wait, you can go.
They have.
Part of that, why do they have to come here?
That's like.
It's part of the I program, because I checked with Noah, and he said, yes, they have to follow your.
They shouldn't, because they have a field with a corn maze in it, there's no good things.
Where where are they parking?
There's two acres in the front, exactly, exactly.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there's stuff that, but you guys.
So if I plant sunflowers, and some person wants to come look at them, because I'm charging them, I have to get a permit.
The business.
What?
So some kid with a lemonade stand on the side of the road needs to come get a permit, cause it's a mighty condition to use.
Well.
So.
I had a Russian.
So there's, where's Ross's permit, and sell maple syrup, and they.
Exactly, that was my point, that was my point.
That's a lawn sale, we got a lot of lawn sales that go on here for a lot longer.
Yeah. Ex- but that's, that's, but that's what I'm saying. No offense to Ross's stand, cause I think that was a great idea.
That is a smaller draw that I.
Yeah, but a corn maze is in a field, in agricultural district, no, it's I think two months, but
It was two weeks.
I'll just have uh September and October.
You have a field, like. When.
So why don't you say for sixty days?
Guess what, in October.
Can have a permitted, thinks it's not a permanent thing.
In October, that recreation is gonna be feeding to my cats. So I don't see how that's not, yes, I don't know, it's rented land, it's our land.
But you're gonna talk.
We rent that land, we planted the corn maze for them, they do the corn maze, and at the end of the corn maze, gone, the corn's gone.
I have no problem, I don't want the rules to hurt, because I feel like that would cost much.
Uh I.
But no offense, but I told him not pay the damn fine and don't come get, I told them they should get a permit, but I said there should be, what would you know, it's our our, was it three, one? Wherever, I don't know.
Wherever I live, it's my neighbor.
R one. What is this, sixty days?
To do it as a sixty day temporary business, or rec- or instead, so we don't mess up her recreational fees.
Yeah.
You just say for sixty or ninety days, you're allowed to get just a permit, and at least somebody has come into the town, and have twenty dollars fee.
And I said, I'm like, I told them that they are going to the DRV.
But the they have to come back every year.
That's fine.
Yeah. Also, this is gonna be a one time.
Okay, this is, they're gonna get a conditional use, and they're gonna be good for.
How much is the fee?
It's not every year, they have to do that.
For, they have to pay two hundred dollars, because they have to go to the DRV.
A year.
Right.
Yeah, maybe another option, maybe the DRV fee.
One a down.
I, they are, I mean, they are because
What?
So that would be like.
My biggest complaint is they didn't know they needed a permit. They wanted to open before COVID began.
But they could get, they could get the permit, I go for the DRV.
They can, but but then you have to wait.
Right, right.
Thirty six years.
But once you do it, you can have that maze every year no matter what.
Right.
It's like HD's barn, right?
Right.
If HD wanted to only have four barn dances a year, and had to come get a permit every year to do those four barn barn dances, or.
So what happens if their barn maze goes for their.
It's easier just to come before the DRB.
I'm gonna get one, be done.
I just don't, I just don't, so maybe we do an option where Amy can explain this to him, if you don't wanna come back every year, you can go through this process. But we wouldn't give you a one time permit at the same cost or fifty dollars or whatever.
And as far as parking.
And someone might go, oh, this year I'm gonna take a one time, but you know what, I'll come back and go through the process for next year.
As as far as parking goes, just ask them to show you, show you. I mean.
That's that's the conditional use.
Right, what I.
No, why can't they show that to you when you give them the permit, I mean, they have two acres of parking lot.
Cause I'm the one person, and there's five person, people made that decision.
If it was the DRB, it's a.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying your concern was parking.
The condition.
No, that's not my concern, that is why it's a conditional use.
Then I don't, yeah, but I don't think, I just don't agree, I.
Well, it's also, it's not always her, she's gotta do the words you guys write, so.
Right.
But I just, that's my point, is in an agricultural district, an agricultural business with no buildings, they have built, and they've done it.
We take the rule.
So go to our, go to R one. We're sorry.
Do we already do R one or something?
We did, so we're gonna just, I want us.
And as far as you're
Uh.
you can take this choice or this choice? I know I don't make the rules, but I don't think that's a good option.
Exactly.
I might assume.
I'm just trying to get a person.
But so, because they could, because they could, if, I mean, if you don't mind paying the fee every year.
Right, right.
And you should, to Oliver's point, you're supposed to rotate. I don't know if they do anymore, but what I learned as a kid is you rotate fields every so often, so may not be corn this year, so may have to move to the ten acres next door.
Yeah.
Cause Oliver says, I'm gonna put in.
Oh, yeah.
I'll pile up the next five years, just pull up.
Yeah.
I have a.
Rebuilding, yeah, but that's.
What is, what is all the conditional uses in there?
Such for use, adapt for use for barn, agricultural.
That's history.
On tractor yard, this would be recreation, outdoor.
Outdoor recreation.
So my question is also, why is outdoor recreation to resident or in an agricultural district considered to a.
Oliver, how we fix this?
Just put it on a permitted use instead of.
Just tell the state to legalize it.
To legalize.
In the the next ag bill, to say that.
No, but so you guys have to understand.
To legalize. The, this is the point is, so she said she called the guy from the state and, or she did, and he said that it wasn't considered ag business, tour, agor tourism.
No, he's, I didn't ask him that, I just.
You need to change the.
Well, that's, cause they got a grant to pay for the damn thing from the state.
I asked him if they, I told him that, and I asked him if they need to come before the board, and he said, is it in your bylaws? And I said, it's under outdoor recreation. He said, then you need to go by your bylaws.
That's where I I.
Outdoor recreation, but listen, outdoor recreation would be
I.
let's think about what outdoor recreation would consist of.
You could have a wedding venue.
Could be, could be.
Under outdoor recreation?
Yeah. I think.
Could be mountain biking, mountain bike trails, it could be anything of that nature, would be outdoor recreation, would be conditional use.
It's got. It's got very.
So would be similar, yeah.
I just, I I could understand it like a wedding venue, because you have a structure, but any outdoor recreation or agor tourism that doesn't even have a structure, I just don't see why it should be a conditional use.
Well, have anybody selling? They this one.
Well, yeah, we have the.
The gas station.
We have.
Slow and hot.
Okay, anybody?
Well, this, to our Oliver's point, those sunflowers, the field, like people go, I've never done it, but people go and make pictures in the sunflowers.
Outdoor. Some outdoor venue.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know where it is, is any dish of.
They don't do it anymore, because they, people weren't paying them.
But if I were, a minnow stand is gonna do that.
They didn't know where to pay for it, they were.
What's that?
If I wanted to open a minnow stand, sell minnows for a giggle, could I do that?
Not legally by the state.
But it's not agriculture.
No, I know it's not agriculture.
That's a business.
I guess curious.
No, it's not outdoor recreation.
Okay.
So do you want me to find a creative solution for Oliver or no?
I, I'm not saying that every, my just, my point is, is a place with no structure that is doing outdoor, even if you call it outdoor recreation, I don't understand why they need to go before the DRV, because what are we even? What are we even?
To this point, though, you have mountain biking, you're.
Park and traffic.
Yeah, but what are we, what are we?
Motor cross track.
What are we, um.
I think, you know what I mean, if, no, I I think that's the best suited definition, if you look at what we have permitted, you look at, as much as I wanna agree with you, Oliver, you look at what we have permitted, and you look at what we have conditional use in those districts, permitted is a pretty it's like housing, it's pretty clear cut, like what's there, and then everything else, it's not like that's a one thing that's getting picked out of, and like being being uh.
So, so actually, so the one question I do have. They used to do breakfast on the farm. Was that.
They had none around here lately.
It was only to build houses.
Yeah.
We did build houses years ago, what, thousand, two thousand, three thousand, people came through. That would have had to be permit, that would have been an out, that would have been a recreational or an outdoor thing.
Trucker fast came in and got, trucker fast came in and got permits today.
Trucker fast goes before the select board, it's a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They come, they come before the select board when they get it, they have to talk to the police, the they had to, I had to get letters, the select board mandated that I.
That that would have been outdoor recreation.
So the only, the only thing I can think of is I can, we could create.
I think you didn't have.
We know, I know, a new use, we to to.
I didn't allow, right.
What I'm hearing, just throw us out there, cause you tell you what to do. We could create an agriculture recreational use and define it as a seasonal in crop rotation, something, so that way if if Oliver wants to have like.
House orchard, they don't have a building.
That's not, like that orchard in my.
But that wouldn't be.
That's been there forever.
That.
But they are going to do one.
We got a new one.
Well, you know what I mean, like some things that would allow.
But I also, to my point, my thought too, though, is not only for agriculture, but like Ross said, mountain biking.
Well, that.
Canoeing, canoeing. I can see that, it's a conditional use. But why? There's no structure. If you're not.
There's parking.
There's parking, there's traffic.
There's parking. Impermeable service.
And you still have a chat, like I I think of like the San Alvin's Town Forest, you know, that's.
So why don't we make it a permitted use, and in the rules, say you must have X amount of parking for out for for a outdoor recreational.
That's on people.
Yeah, there's sides, and everything.
But how, how can anybody, I mean, a brand new, say the corn maze, you don't know how many people are gonna go to that? I like the the seasonal, you can either, if you don't wanna deal with it, or you can go for the, if not, you can pay the seasonal price.
I just think you would have to create a new use, I don't think we can move record, outdoor recreational, how to conditionally use, cause I get your point there, like what other things would fall into that? I just think we'd have to literally create a new category with a new definition and say, like we've had to do it pretty tightly, and I'm thinking of things like farm on, breakfast on the farm, I mean.
Sugar house tours.
Even even you should. Sugar house tours, like I didn't think like the breakfast in a sugar house, technically that would be a permitted use, because it's supposed to be a sugar house on restaurant. You know what I mean, so like.
Oh, I have another one, I did farm tours this spring for city school, kindergarten, and I got paid through Sheldon Farms. Probably needed a permit for that then. Why? It's recreation, they came and walked around.
I mean, it's hard for me, like, I mean, I think like, the only time I've done a corn maze is my kids' boys got a lot, shit, went all out into a field, just spent. I thought it was just like a. We didn't pay for it, just did it on the farm.
I'm just saying, it it's just.
Yeah, but that's a one off, that's not.
Hey, I got paid six hundred bucks to do it, I might want to start going.
That's.
Once, profitable with making milk.
All right.
Hey.
Do you want me, we're pretty much done, section thing, we'll go to section three next thing.
Yeah.
I have that for it.
We'll get Saint Alvin's town, see how it compares to our.
Southern Grove District.
Southern Grove, and match it, and then we're gonna sweeten it.
Do we want me to come up with a new use for this or no? For that.
Why did it get to one hour, and I understand, I don't understand. But.
It's absolutely bananas to me that agricultural district.
It's not, it's not being given, in uh
Everything in traffic.
It's not giving any adverse treatment compared to any of those other things that are under conditional use. Is the way I look at it, the only thing that's permitted there are only.
Bothers me, and this is an agricultural district, and there's nothing about agriculture and permitted use.
Agribusiness?
It's not imperative use.
Oh, impermitted use.
So this is an agricultural district, nothing about agriculture.
All of us. Tell them to just.
No, you know what I did, I told my neighbors to do it, and guess what, the town's gonna find you, and they're never gonna like that.
State put corn maze into agriculture business and stuff.
It is, but it is though, because they like they.
Okay, conversations getting.
Down with the.
They're beating a dead horse.
We got it on, we got it on.
Good. Load them up around it.
Public comment.
Yeah, we're gonna keep moving, next meeting date, next August, next Wednesday, fourteenth.
Yeah.
Public comment, anybody here? Nope. Any other necessary business? Having nothing, all entertaining a motion to a.
A big motion to a uh eight oh five P M.
Motion's been made and segmented. Uh, any discussion? Um, all hearing none, all those in favor of seeing a five, I say nine, I oppose.
I.
What theories, can you pose?
I'll give you my phone.
Oh, thank you. I figured somebody here would.
You're wrong. Hi.